Okay, you get to do the roll call.
Roll call please.
Yeah, roll call please.
Uh, Jerza? Osterloo? Kingslinger? Lumby? Penny? Sonny? Larson? And Alan?
And we have an agenda, I mean, we have a quorum.
We do have a quorum, yes.
All right, uh, any declaration of conflicts of the proposed agenda before we get into it? Hearing none, let's go on to the agenda which has been provided to us. Any additions or corrections? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded that the agenda be approved as presented, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, motion carries. Uh, the minutes of the May tenth meeting were also provided in the packet of information given to us. Any additions or corrections to those?
Move to approve.
Moved and seconded that the minutes be approved as presented. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, motion carries. Uh, the next meeting is tentatively scheduled for June fourteenth. Do I hear a motion to approve that blanket?
Set the date.
Moved and seconded that the next meeting be scheduled for the fourteenth of June, discussion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a plot of block two, block five of the woods first edition, a subdivision of the east half, the southwest quarter of section twenty-three and township one oh three north, range sixty west, of the fifth parallel Meridian city of Mitchell-Davisson County, South Dakota. Anything exciting about that plot that we need to know?
Uh, nope, it does follow their master plan. Um, we are waiting on the elevation cert yet, so we'd ask that you approve a contingent on that. Um, other than that, it's, uh, pretty routine.
Anyone from the audience got any comments on that plot? And I would assume we're ready for a motion to approve it?
I'll move to approve with said contingency.
Do I hear a second? Moved and seconded that the plot be approved with the contingency as provided. Uh, elevation certifications, I believe was what you're looking for?
Correct.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, motion is carry. Next item on the agenda is a rezoning of lot three, A three, a subdivision of lot A in the southwest quarter of section twenty-seven, one oh three sixty, except the south twenty-eight feet there of city of Mitchell-Davisson County, South Dakota. Two oh one and two oh one and a half, East Norway Avenue from TWC to R four. Talk to us about it a little bit, please.
Uh, for your reference, uh, the building that they want to remodel into the fourplex was the old Safe Haven Animal Hospital. Um, they are wanting to rezone from TWC to R four, and I do believe the applicant is here to speak on it.
Hello gentlemen, so the...
Introduce yourself, please.
Sure, I'm Dr. Jason Hezen, I'm the owner of, uh, the building that we're currently talking about. When you gave the description, it's broken into two oh one and two oh one and a half, uh, East Norway. Two oh one and a half is actually a large storage building to the south of the Safe Haven building, um, which, uh, I, I do not own that, uh, that building at this time. Uh, what I'd like to do with this building, as you know, it was, uh, Safe Haven Small Animal Hospital for a number of years, and, uh, it's been vacant now for two years. Um, been, uh, uh, looking for an opportunity there and, uh, came across the, the, yes, need of, uh, having, uh, housing in, in Mitchell. So, uh, what my plan was, in particular, housing that allows pets. Uh, since this was a vet clinic, I figured it would probably still be pet friendly, I guess. So, uh, the plan was to trade this into, or turn this into four two-bedroom apartments. And if you'll see the, the, the first, uh, plan, I guess there, it shows a, a rough sketch of the general layout of the, of the building and what we're, what we're looking at. Uh, the, the building there would have four two-bedroom apartments. There's, uh, currently enough parking there, uh, paved parking for people to park around the building, uh, for eight spots. And, uh, there's an exercise area directly south of the building for a green area for either, uh, pets or, or people. Uh, we'll have it engineered and, 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 uh, therefore appropriately if we get the approval for it. But at this point, that's, uh, that's a rough sketch there. There, you can see along, in the middle there, two oh one East Norway, the building in question is directly south of the trailer park there, um, surrounded by, uh, other, uh, on that side of the street, other commercial, uh, or commercial buildings, I guess. And, uh, um, where the, where the pointer is from the mouse there, that would be the area where, you know, would be the outside area, uh, common area for the residents of the, of the building. Um, any questions?
Any questions from the, from the committee here?
Your plan showed a stair in the middle of the building.
Uh, the stair is, it's probably not gonna be a stair there. Um, we, we're still in, kind of trying to determine if we're gonna use a, uh, uh, one, the current heating and cooling system zoned, or if, if not, that staircase there would be, uh, some general, um, you know, like, uh, oh, I don't know, uh, utility room, I guess, okay? So that was, that's kind of a, a rough drawing for that size building, not necessarily for this building in particular. So no, there would be nothing, nothing upstairs as it currently is.
So no basement?
No, there's no basement, it's slab on grade. And then, uh, we would put, uh, on the flooring, um, we would put epoxy, textured epoxy, that comes across the flooring, then up the baseboard, so the baseboards would be covered, so it'd be pet, you know, pet, very pet friendly.
Any other questions?
Do you know what the intentions would be to the building to the south?
Uh, I've, uh, talked to the owner of that, he's had, he has storage in it now, and that's what he intends to keep it for. Uh, Mr. Nagel owns it, and, uh, uh, he's had storage in there, and that's what he intends to keep doing with it.
Just something to think about, if that south building is zoned R four, um, there cannot be any rental storage.
Okay.
Easement to get there to that other building?
Uh, I, I believe the easement is platted already, uh, there's a street platted there. Um, I would not ta, I don't want that two oh one and a half, I'm not talking about rezoning that. So it's just two oh one, just, yep, just my portion, I don't, I don't, uh, own anything with that, with two oh one and a half.
Any other questions? Comments from the audience? There is no further discussion, I assume we are ready to talk about a vote? Do you have any more to add to us?
Uh, I don't think so, I just think it would be a, a pretty good spot, you know, it's close to DWU there, it's, uh, close to our ready residential rental area, across the street at the trailer park, and, uh, and like I say, I think, uh, we could always use some more pet, pet friendly housing in town.
What's your pleasure, folks?
Would this be considered spot zoning, although there is R four right across the street?
Well, usually if there's a zoning appropriate right across the street, that's a, that's an okay deal. What's your choice, folks? What are we gonna tell the council to do with it, you know, they're the ones that have to make the decision.
Well, since there's a R four across the street and no spot zoning, there's other rentals near commercial stuff too, you know, and like I said, pet friendly, you know, I rent, I really don't care to do the rents in my house, but I have to, but they're limited, so I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion on the motion, we, I assume you're, that we are ready to vote, let's go roll call, please.
Uh, Jerza?
Yes.
Osterloo?
Yes.
Kingslinger?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Sonny?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Carries, let's go on to item number nine.
Uh, one second, this will be heard at the June seventh council meeting.
Hearing and recommendation on an ordinance creating zoning regulations for cannabis establishments, who's going to work on that for us?
I think that's gonna fall to me.
I wondered if that was why you were here?
Yeah, so I, I think, um, most everybody's probably aware, but, uh, the IM twenty-sixth that was approved last November, uh, case effect coming up here on July first. So, really, there, there's, uh, importance on getting our regulations in place before the state laws become effective. So, the portion that you have in front of you here today, uh, is the zoning side of things. Uh, that's gonna help determine where these types of businesses can locate. Um, it's a pretty straightforward ordinance, um, we did break it down as to the types of facilities, but really, it's kind of the same locations for each of them. So, the, the districts where they would be allowed or conditional use, um, it's gonna be HB and TWC for, uh, permitted, and it would be Central Business for conditional. Uh, that would apply to cannabis cultivation facilities, cannabis testing facilities, cannabis product manufacturing facilities, and also cannabis dispensaries. Now, with the cannabis dispensaries, there's also, uh, the additional regulation of buffer zones around certain types of other land uses and from other dispensaries. There's also a, a few criteria listed, uh, that would be relevant to discussions on, uh, conditional uses and variances relating to these operations. Uh, and then we do also specifically lay out the other zoning districts as being prohibited, uh, for any type of cannabis establishment, as well as saying that a non-licensed cannabis establishment would not be allowed to locate in any district. That's kind of your basic overview, um, I don't know if there's any questions or, or comments from me on this, but the zoning part of it is somewhat straightforward. Um, the zoning map that was attached and included in your packet, um, does a pretty good job of showing you where the districts are that they could be located, and then showing the buffer zones around the, the various other land uses that, uh, give rise to those buffer zones. So I'll, I'll turn it back over for questions and comments.
Are you working on licensing regulations as well?
Yes, so, big picture here, this is kind of the first step in the process. Uh, for the zoning ordinance, there's a little bit more hoops that we have to jump through. So, the, the notice of hearing for this needed to be published a certain amount of time in advance. You need to have this hearing, and then it goes to the council to follow the normal process. Um, there's going to be a special meeting tomorrow at five PM for first reading on the zoning and the licensing ordinance. Um, and then there would be a second meeting next week, Wednesday, at five PM for second reading and adoption on both the zoning and licensing ordinance. And as long as we get the minutes from that published on time, everything will be in place by July first.
Any questions from anybody here? Anybody in the audience got any questions about the whole operation?
The ordinance states that, um, there's a thousand foot, excuse me, a three hundred foot buffer for educational institutions, but the map shows a thousand foot buffer for schools?
Correct, so that, I, I asked them to include the thousand foot buffer around the schools, um, because the state law provisions require that thousand law, uh, thousand foot buffer. So, our ordinance wouldn't, but because of the way the state law is, uh, written, they still wouldn't be able to locate inside that area.
All right, I see we have someone on the podium.
Okay, Pam Bathke, I was just gonna ask a question on that same topic, um, did you just say?
Could you identify yourself first, please?
Pam Bathke, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so the state law would not require, or would not allow, uh, cannabis facility within the one thousand square feet of the schools, is that what she said?
Correct.
Okay, and then, um, my question was, my other question was, for the three hundred feet, where did you come up with that designated distance?
Uh, it's the approximate distance of a city block, so that's where that comes from.
Okay, 'cause I had looked up online South Dakota law in regard to the drug-free zone, and saw that one how, one thousand feet for schools, and then five hundred feet for other named, um, types of locations. So I was just curious if, you know, that would be a consideration to, to use five hundred instead of three hundred, because it gives a little bit additional buffer and it gives some consistency. So that was my comment.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
If there happens to be an existing pharmacy, for instance, within these buffer zones, that would probably be able to sell this business product, is there any way at this point that they would be able to do that?
Um, well, there is the, the variance procedure listed in there for the buffer zones, so if, if there was a situation like that, it's not that, it's not that a business could not be within those buffer zones, but there's going to be an uphill, uh, battle for them to, to be able to locate in that area. As far as the pharmacies themselves, I don't know that they're going to be able to handle this stuff, because they have additional, uh, federal regulations they need to comply with, and there's complicating factors with it still, marijuana still being illegal at the federal level.
Currently, they don't plan on allowing pharmacies to carry it because it's not approved drug, for obvious reasons.
Okay.
It's not FDA approved, so if we don't, we have to say in question to state legislation people, representatives, senator, uh, when we sat out with them, they don't expect pharmacies to carry it, but individuals will have a license to do it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Please note, uh, the approximate time that we officially open this hearing when we got to that item on, on the agenda. Other questions or comments, gentlemen?
I like the idea of expanding that three hundred to five hundred, but if we're gonna do that, I'd go to six hundred and just make it two, two street.
Two blocks.
Blocks. This is my own personal opinion on that, I guess.
And I guess that's something up to the council, but this is a preliminary hearing on what we think about the zoning areas, and, and I guess, uh, the thoughts that I have on that has been, I thought you laid out some pretty good ideas here. And I would not be opposed myself to go to five or six hundred feet either. But that's, you know, this is the, probably the first airing of this discussion that, that any body has had. So it certainly opens to any suggestions, I would guess, that we wanna make to it, is that not right?
Yeah, certainly, you can, you can, uh, have discussion, make recommendations. Um, I think the reason that we chose the three hundred doll, or three hundred foot, instead of, uh, a larger area, was to try to not be overly restrictive. Um, there is a specific provision in there that says that you cannot, um, prohibit a dispensary, so you don't wanna run into that kind of an argument. Um, that said, I don't think that increasing that barrier, or in, increasing that buffer area would necessarily amount to prohibiting that type of businesses, there's still other places they could locate. But there are certain zoning districts that you'd probably end up zoning out. For example, the central business, if you go with more than three hundred foot, it's basically going to eliminate the entire district, so.
The central business district, if we go more than three hundred foot, you're gonna eliminate it?
It, it would probably eliminate it, all of it, except for maybe a block, I would guess.
Yeah, that is a bad thing necessarily, myself.
And I guess that, that's another discussion on whether that,
Yeah.
whether you just wanna do that and not have central business in there at all, but, um, however, however you wanna take the discussion, it's, it's definitely an open issue.
I think the logic here is that you will probably have somebody wanting to dispense downtown. And if we try to go to that six hundred, we eliminate most of that, which makes no sense, especially if we're trying to rejuvenate our downtown, so.
Yeah, there's pros and cons both ways there, isn't there, Eric?
And I, and I know there's a lot of people opposed to it, fact is, it's coming, it will be here. We need to have something in place to address it, so that's probably where we're at.
Yep, I think all, I think all of us understand that situation, and... Stephanie, you got a question?
Uh, I have a question, but I guess really other comment I would say to, just for the general public maybe listening, is to be aware that that distance isn't just from the business, but it's to the property. So if three hundred feet from the property, you're hitting another property line, you can't have it anywhere in that property. You can't go four hundred feet away in center area, that whole property is excluded. So I think that's why you have the three hundred versus the five hundred feet, because it was eliminating a lot of the properties even in, um, other areas that we look at.
Yeah, and restrictive zoning, that's been an issue for
Right.
several centuries around zoning, folks, so that's another thing to keep in mind, too.
So you're saying you've been around that long, doesn't know?
Yeah, practically, guys, practically.
Like, Justin, if you could pull up the bypass area, 'cause there's, we're, that's it, or, I'm sorry. That's a good example, 'cause a lot of the businesses on the west side of the I-9, a lot of the properties are already out, um, all, all together, because part of the property is that property line.
So Justin, is there a general buffer between these businesses and just residential?
Not, not the residential districts themselves, no. I mean, they're, they're not allowed in residential districts, but there's not a buffer zone specific to residential districts.
Yeah, it's on the top of that map, if you saw the curve, um, the one page above, just about a little bit down there, you can see the red line that falls into the blue hash line on both the north and the, you know, a lot of those properties are out just from those.
It's on the corners.
Yep, and then there's another one just south of there, on the green square, yeah. And, so one of those allowable districts already has, you know, a good portion of the properties that wouldn't qualify.
And Larry, kind of back to your point on buffer zones around residential, that's really where you run into the problem, if you're putting a buffer zone around those, you're going to almost zone out everything, even the, uh, other places that would be allowed to, so, and that's...
Larry, it looks like you wanna go downtown with it.
Make sure you turn the screen on next time you run this, guys.
It'll be on next time they're on it, because that's where I get it.
Yeah. Yeah, so does everybody else sitting here in the V.
It's really hard to see that red hash, but it's... Yeah, see, there's another red mark through the central business.
Okay, well, I'll put it out here.
So the wa, way that the existing buffer zones would sit, it's, for central business, basically, anything north of ninth is already gonna be zoned out due to buffer zones. Um, the central area between, uh, basically between second and sixth would also pretty much be zoned out, which really leaves you a couple blocks there between sixth and ninth, and then the very south end of it.
And then there's also a distance between each location, right?
Right, so if you do have one, uh, dispensary that, say, located at the south side of the central business district, that's gonna create a thousand foot buffer around that business. So, if another one wanted to come downtown, they'd probably have to go to that extreme north of ninth or somewhere in that area. Which, I mean, you could potentially have that same issue happen down on Burr or, uh, Spruce or, or other locations, but that thousand foot was kind of an effort to make sure you don't just have a strip mall full of dispensaries all of a sudden.
Pam Bathke, I was just gonna state, when I was looking at the map in the area of Spruce, it looked like that was kind of fair game, so, um, that would be an option, a, a, an optional good location. So if you wanna look at that, I think keeping it within the five hundred feet or whatever doesn't eliminate that.
Good luck, guys. Anything else that we wanna ask here, guys, and before we make a decision, is make a recommendation to the council? I, I, I agree that I think the five hundred would be good, but I, I kinda have to think with, like Justin, is that that's gonna be probably too restrictive and, you know, maybe another branch of the fence will come after us about that, because they have been, they have been known to do that, uh, too restrictive, so. So, it's a, I'm glad you're to the decision, man, from the district of last year. It's the first reading tomorrow night, right?
Yep. Correct.
All right, will you wanna make a recommendation to them? You should, you better, we had a public hearing.
We're gonna just stick to what Justin had with the three hundred feet and everything, just, I agree with that. I, I mean, if Larry wants it downtown with his, it looks like he's got it started.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
You are here a second. Moved and seconded that we recommend the council that they take a look at this as presented to us. Further discussion on the motion, and I think you heard our discussion on the five hundred foot thing and, and where we're at.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no just because of that five hundred foot, not because of the rest of it.
All right, 'cause we're gonna go roll call anyway, anybody else got anything to mention? Let's go roll call.
Uh, Jerza?
Yes.
Osterloo?
Yes.
Kingslinger?
No.
Uh, Penny?
Yes.
Sonny?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Okay, this hearing is officially over. You gotta know the time and what, what period. Is there any other business to come before this body at this time? Hearing that, we are open... Hearing that, we are openly ready for any public input. If you need to address the city planning commission on an item that's out on the agenda, extending personnel items, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken. Saying no one coming forward to the podium, this meeting is adjourned.